They were trying to find grade.
Yeah, but no one ever got any kind of a report from them.
I don't know.
How long ago was that? Any idea when that was?
So it appears that they are somehow.
Chicks are, they have the initial awareness. And if that's the case, then definitely.
In my best estimation, I don't know who spoke with them or, you know, what the results of their transit.
If we get even tick on the outside or woods, remember we didn't address the second. Yeah, second proposal we'll have to, which Kathy and I talked about that, so.
Okay, that's all I have.
We have a P O for that, for public properties.
Yeah, there's one in there for the general. Oh, yes, I remember. Okay, I do have a P O and it's the service call for the sounding alarm. And it's for one thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents to East Clark. And Commissioner, that'd be for. Commissioner Gates, Commissioner Gervaila, yes, that's your story.
Yes. Is there anything else?
The color.
Okay, very good, very good. Streets of Public Improvement, Mr. Cochran is out this evening due to a funeral in the Hope's family car body. So he's on his way back, so I've asked Tom McHill to handle the Streets of Public Improvement forces. Mayor, it looks like there is a purchase order for the sewer plant number seven oh nine. Says mixer motor for sludge press, one thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. So we need a motion to second to approve that purchase order.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor, it looks like there was several pool adjustments this evening. We'll start with a Kelly Sullivan at six oh seven East Webster Street. It looks like the co-workers went out and they are in compliance with our ordinance. So we need a motion to approve the application for sewer adjustment for Kelly Sullivan at six oh seven East Webster Street.
I make that motion for Kelly Sullivan for the full adjustment. Commissioner Gates?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story? Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
The second one tonight, folks, is for a Casey Garcia at five oh eight West Sixth Street. Again, the co-workers says that they are in compliance, we need a motion in a second to approve the application for sewer adjustment for a Casey Garcia at five oh eight West Sixth Street.
That's a motion.
I said I can hit. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story? Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the last one that we have tonight, the third one, is a Melinda, it looks like a Rothschild possibly is the name, or Rothschild at three oh seven North Buchanan Street. And this one apparently is not in compliance. So we need a motion to reject the application for sewer adjustment for a Melinda Rothschild at three oh seven North Buchanan Street.
I made that motion to reject the.
I'll say.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila? Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I don't see any late lock transfers tonight, Mayor. But remember, five D is a discussion and approval, a stop sign on Gardner and East Taylor. And maybe somebody in here knows more about that, Mayor. My understanding.
Except for Y.
My understanding is, is it similar to what they're talking about? There's a, there's a Y there, and there's a Y coming the other way on Solomon that I think Chris is talking about. Where we've just recently put up a stop sign. So I'm assuming what he is requesting is a stop sign the same way coming off of Gardner Street.
So currently Gardner does not have any stop sign of aware of it. And the request is.
There's a sign over by the Y bar, there's a stop sign there.
There was a yield sign.
No, there's a stop sign.
There's a nows or stop sign.
I think it's for.
Right there.
Yeah. We need a motion to put up a stop sign in a second, put up a stop sign.
Is this a motion to amend the ordinance, or is this a motion to actually?
I, this would be a motion to.
Actually do the work.
Install a stop sign.
Okay.
On Gardner at the intersection with East Taylor.
Yes.
Then what we need to update the ordinance at some point. There will be a, that may be a later.
Commissioner Case? Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor, it looks like that's all, Mr. Cochran. Very good. Public health and safety.
Yeah, I've got some purchase orders. I got one here for five thousand four hundred ninety-five ninety-five for Super Micro Server, MS Server, Standard. Can't read your writing, chief. It's a sixty-four gig, right? I'll make the motion, we approve five thousand four hundred ninety-five ninety-five.
I would like to see that paid for out of the impound fund.
You know, Chris, everything you've got, and please, you want to help.
It's in my budget.
It's in, yeah.
When was it purchased?
It hasn't been purchased yet.
When was the order filed?
A few weeks ago.
In April, prior to the end of the fiscal year.
So it's after we discussed it.
It's going to be backdated to the previous fiscal year. We discussed it, put it in the budget. We are now approving the purchase order. So I didn't expect that this purchase was coming, I mean, the purchase order came through, I figured we would go on the purchase and then order the piece of equipment.
I think you're going, you're not going to be happy till you bust that impound fund. Everything that you, they're wanting comes out of the impound fund.
Did you?
The ARs, that, you take it out of the impound fund.
Did you study the budget at all?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, and I talked to the man.
Okay, so you studied the budget?
Exactly.
Did you see any increase in the budget?
On his? No. Some, some, but not, not like this. This should be, this, this is important, Chris. Why not just pay it? Why?
Were you the ones who said that this stuff should be bid on? October ninth, you sat.
Who would you go head it to? The guy at the high school?
No, I just, he doesn't do private work.
Something like that.
No, checking and bidding.
You're not gonna get it, bud.
Every single department saw an increase in their budget prior to wages being taken into account.
Why can't we take this? It was in the, if it's in the budget, is it in the budget, Chris?
For fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, this purchase will be backdated to twenty-three twenty-four.
There you go, Chris. Might as well barked up three. That's right. Laugh, probably won't have it.
A lot, a lot.
Yeah, you've got three years of laughing. Okay, the next one.
We've.
So.
You've got a motion.
I got a motion, nobody wants a second.
And there's been an objection to that, there's been a comment made, so is there?
I'll say. Commissioner Case?
Can I get clarification on what the motion is and what the second is for?
The motion is for the five thousand four hundred ninety-five ninety-five.
To be paid from the line item in the, in the general budget, not out of the impound fund?
Yes, yes.
Was that your second? Was for that? Okay.
Commissioner Case?
No.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
No, no. We should have done that beforehand. That's just my opinion, if it was an early on, we should have done three oh first, different policy.
Okay, go on. Next one is for new hire. Duty gear and equipment, two thousand two hundred ten seventy-eight. I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioners, Eric Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
The next one is point blank ballistic, six hundred and fifty. Point blank guardian carrier, two hundred and forty, comes to eight hundred and ninety dollars. I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
The next one is annual lawman software, four hundred and fifty, annual subscription lawman information, sharing, nine hundred and fifty dollars. I'll make a motion on that.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
The next one I have is a used digital radio for the mini bumper, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. I'll make a motion on that.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
The next one I have, you've all got a copy of the golf carts, I'll make a motion to accept that.
Whoa, hold on, so what do we want to change on the guys so that we can correct the ordinance?
This is just the previous order.
Yes, it's not been updated?
Yeah, just hasn't been updated, maybe just updated. There's a lot of them running around town that it doesn't have.
So we have the F B updates, we've made motions to approve the updates already, we just didn't update it.
So we didn't make a motion to approve the.
Approve the update.
Making updates.
You just say what update you want to make the motion to approve.
I understand it's about when licenses and then the temporary.
The license is in September.
Yeah, I think we're looking at moving it from that kind of catty walk this year to match the calendar year, from January to December, correct?
We, we discussed moving it from January to December or mocking our fiscal year, which would be May one to April thirty.
Is West City on board for that too? Because this, our sticker goes to West City too. Have we checked with them?
No.
You check with them, see if they will still do it. You buy a sticker, it counts in West City.
I don't believe.
If you buy one in West City, it counts in Benton.
Of course it does.
I don't know what theirs run.
Yeah.
I don't know, but we, probably have to check.
You know, at least make sure that they'll reciprocate, even if our, even if our table.
I don't think theirs runs currently September to September, so I don't know why it would be an issue.
Right. We don't really know when they're starting now, we just do our own thing.
I, I don't think it, not as far as now.
Kind of two parts, it was lining the sticker up with when makes most sense, which you talked about calendar year, we talked about January one or calendar years. And the other one was just creating some sort of temporary thing they could take with them, because they're thirty days, so they can drive it illegally up to the police department to get it legal.
That way they don't have a trailer.
That way they don't have a trailer. I think those were the two changes, I remember.
Let's just, let's just tell you. I'll make a call west city, able to, till we get all that straight.
They may have decals they can give us. Maybe they'll have decals they can give us.
Could someone make a motion to table?
Thank God.
Yes.
And some second.
Chris is.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervaila? Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, at the May the sixth meeting, regular monthly meeting, we advise that Police Commission has approved the request for John Owens and Zach Halsted. Positions a firefighter terms for sixty days until we can get the full-time hire. So I'll make a motion to approve those two. You got anything to say so, Chris?
Yeah, they, they can't, they require us through, through the statute to approve us of any temporary appointments. They went ahead and they request, they asked who they would be, since we've lost Jeff Coleman, who retired. They went, kind of proactively went ahead and, and since they had their monthly meeting, to, went ahead and approved proactively those, who it would be. At this point in time, they would bring it back to the council, the council would need to approve that request. When it comes to temporary, there's just one, essentially, one approval that would, that would happen. On a full-time hire, certainly we'll have, you, you as the council will have to approve to allow the merit board to begin the process. And then when the merit board gets the candidate completely ready, then we would come back to you with a name for approval for hire, for that replacement. So this is just for the temporary appointment that will serve the interim time between, for the retirement and when the, when the new hire can, can finish all testing and, and be ready for hire.
Are, are they going to co-fill this, like on a fifty-fifty basis?
It's a, it's about an eighty-twenty. The, the, the one gentleman, he's been a member of the fire department, John Owens, since nineteen ninety-two. Very well aware of all the operations, has been an integral part of, of everything we've done. The other gentleman is the one that we, the fire department is seeking as the number one candidate for the replacement. So this allows him to come in and, and essentially begin grooming him and getting some things done early, which will then at the, at the end of, it will shorten up his probation at the end of his, once he gets hired career. And then that, that'll certainly help on overtime, that'll help on everything else. So we're just giving him a little bit of a jump start.
This being personnel, is this something that we can go and execute and just talk about? I just want to make sure we got our ducks in a row.
You bet.
One thing I don't see in here is, is what pay rate looks like.
Yes, yes, that pay rate is based on all the. Yes, yes, uh, that pay rate is based on, uh, all the other, uh, that's really never been my, my department.
Which is why it'd be good for us to go ahead and sit down and have a conversation, and we were on the same page, so we know what we're voting on, so.
I think we need to, we need to hold off on that until we come out of closed, if we go into executive session, so I want to talk about that in closed session. Okay, so we'll do six C in executive session.
So, uh, make a motion to put these guys on?
I, I guess, discuss, if you guys are gonna talk about executive session, I'll pay, and then I guess we'll come out and then put them on.
But pay, they're not getting top firefighters paid, right?
I give you a brief history, previously throughout all the years, the firefighter pay for that position was the starting salary. Uh, the last year, the last time we did a temporary, uh, we, we matched it with what had been set in other departments, but never in ours, which was three dollars less than the starting salary.
That's what I was thinking that it was.
That's, I was under the understanding, even though that it wasn't talked about last time, there was a little bit of our issue with our guy who worked, served a temporary last year, what he thought he was getting paid and what he actually got paid. I have no problem with the three dollars less, it seems to align with other departments, or I mean, other departments within, within the city. So that was my understanding that that's what it would be, because that's what the city has been using.
Three dollars less than starting pay and, and no benefits.
Then started. And no benefits, that's correct.
Okay.
So do we still have to go into executive session for that?
Does anybody still need to tell me about this particular issue?
It'd be helpful, just to make sure we're on the same page. Cause we're gonna go in for some other things to take up. Right. Uh, accounts and finance. Uh, you have two payrolls in front of you. Yeah. Uh, April twenty-sixth totaling one hundred and six thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents with eighty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-three cents out of the general fund. And twenty-six thousand forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents out of the water and sewer fund. I'm gonna make note that this paid role includes the overtime from the Eclipse Festival, which the cost of overtime and comp reached three thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and five cents. Um, so, and extremely high, and I know that we had some fire calls in there on top of it, that kind of exacerbated that number. But that's an extremely high number for an event, um, just kind of given the scope of it. Uh, that's just a statement that to disclose why it's higher than it usually is, where I make a motion to approve that payroll as presented.
I second that. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Masters.
Yes, one of the items real quick, it's still a payroll issue, day five-one, that is our clothing allowance to the four employees that you let to receive a, just a, a hard check at the beginning of the fiscal year. So I have a, a separate payroll for May first for clothing allowance and the street department totaling seventeen hundred dollars. I make a motion to approve that as presented.
I second that. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Masters.
Yes, and then the last payroll is May tenth, totaling one hundred and four thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents with eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-six cents out of the general and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents out of the water and sewer fund. I make a motion to approve that as presented.
Is that hundred and four hundred and six?
One oh four. Did I say one oh six?
No, it says one oh six.
The first one says one oh six.
That's the, okay, that's the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Turn to the second, I, yeah, I made the motion, I made a second.
Second, I second that. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Masters.
Um, bill seventy. I don't have a breakdown. Okay.
He does.
I do.
He does.
I do, it's buried in there. We didn't have, have anything out of M T, correct?
No other funds this time.
So, three ninety-five, the total that we're looking at. So, I just signed all the checks and signed all the bills. Uh, we have bills, uh, ending in today for three hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Make a motion to approve that as presented, my apologies, guys.
I second that. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Masters.
Yes. Uh, seven C, pay resolution, it's a one-year pay resolution, and we just revisit it every single year. Um, this year, the, you guys have this spreadsheet breakdown in front of you. Um, we have five, sorry, we have seven employees that go on the pay resolution. Um, one will come off in the fall when Lisa retires. Um, the tier one employees, which are, uh, the treasurer, police admin, the water clerk, and billing clerk, sorry, the clerk, the treasurer, the billing clerk, and the police admin will receive a two and a half percent pay increase for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. That is not indicative of the steps that they may attain at some point during the fiscal year. The, uh, the one tier C employee that is not in their first year, the billing clerk will receive three percent, not indicative of any steps that they may accrue. And then code enforcement and the new treasurer will receive no increases, they are still well within their first few months of work. So Brooke, I believe this is twenty-four oh four?
Correct.
So I make a motion to, resolution twenty-four oh four, which is the pay resolution for non-contractual, non-bargaining unit employees for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
I second that. Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervalea?
Yes.
Commissioner Story? Mayor Masters.
Yes. Seven D, uh, bidding and contract procedures. Uh, I included a copy of the ordinance brief, uh, I would like to modify this, um. So we, I've kind of talked about it off and on with P O's, it's been all departments across the board, so I'm not just picking on one. Um, everything in green on the back page is added, nothing has been stricken from this ordinance. We are amending and adding to essentially, uh, item L with emergency purchases. Uh, employee making the emergency purchase must attempt to attain approval of both the department commissioner, as well as the finance, as well as the commissioner of accounts and finance. This allows for checks and balances in emergency purchases. And then item N is a completely new addition, which is the purchase order procedures, all purchases exceeding four hundred dollars are required to have a purchase order filled out and submitted to the city council for approval. All purchase, all purchases deemed an emergency must still be put on purchase order with council discussion and order. This is just us being good by the taxpayers and their money. Um, we have a couple of additions there. Utilities and payments on contracts, agreements and services previously approved by the council are not subject to the new amendment. And no purchase agreement or contract for services may be subdivided to avoid the requirements of the policy. We outlay violation of it, which follows our current, uh, our current uh, disciplinary code in twelve one, twelve one twelve. Up to discussion.
Why are we going?
Because I'm tired of seeing, it doesn't matter if it's five hundred dollars, a dollar.
Needs to go up.
I need to go up.
Yeah.
Why is it so hard to fill out a purchase order?
I don't, I have no idea, but you, you can't buy nothing for four hundred dollars, you can't buy nothing for five hundred dollars.
I mean, I signed a bunch of checks for under four hundred dollars tonight. Signed a bunch of bills for it. We meet, we meet every two weeks. There is no reason we should be having this discussion period.
I agree, it shouldn't, it should, we shouldn't have, be at four hundred dollars.
Well, if we could get P O's turned in on time and, and correctly, we wouldn't have this discussion.
Have you told me that people's not turning their purchase orders in? I turn them in when I get them.
We've had this discussion, darling.
What, have you said anything to the person?
Yes. It's a, it's a, it's a department, it, it's a citywide issue. It's a citywide issue.
I don't think we need to move it, need to move it up if anything.
Again, that's why I've not got a motion on the table, that's why we're discussing it before there's a motion.
What's other, what other towns, what do they have to leave there?
Marion's purchase order on everything.
Everything.
Every, you go buy a screw from Ace Hardware, there is a purchase order filled out. They still have.
And that's the extreme, that's the only way.
They still have their purchasing power, they're still placing orders. They still have their power, we're not taking their purchase power away.
My opinion, I need to leave it as is.
We can modify it.
Yeah.
We can modify it.
What should the discipline be if it's left at five, if they're not turning them in, you're going to buy them?
If they, if you told them and we told them, write them up, and if that don't work, go in, in step. Why would one or two, three people put the whole city in jeopardy of, of that? If, if they know it and you told them and they won't turn them in? There's other things we can do to get them to do.
One would think that codifying the purchase order policy would be a step in the right direction. Cause currently it's a policy, not an ordinance.
Okay, so, so this makes it more official, it's not a policy, it turns it into a.
Correct, because I can, I mean, again, with, with commissioner's discretion, like, I can go change the purchase order policy on the whim because it's a policy that comes out of the treasurer's office, out of the commissioner of accounts and finance. This codifies, this gives the council a say in the policy.
I've always my opinion, that's it.
I mean, it's, again, it's up for discussion.
So it's got, it's got two parts, one is it's being codified.
Yes.
The second part is five hundred to four hundred, so it's kind of a two-piece.
And again, if we want to modify that number, that's fine, but again, like, we still need to see P O's, I mean, this is something that gets.
I agree to that.
That, that get, that gets brought up in the audit every single year, we get P O's late. Again, I've spent twelve months just kind of feeling this out and it's not changed. So this is the route that I took to change it.
So if this don't change it, you're gonna take it lower, and then lower, and then lower?
Turn off their purchasing power, or require a purchase order for every single expenditure, just, I mean, listen, I get it, Marion has a substantially larger budget, and they have a treasurer, they have a treasurer, an assistant treasurer, and then minions. Uh, you know, they have, they have a bunch of A P and A R billing clerks. But they seem to be pretty efficient with it. I mean, it's probably the most efficient municipality in Southern Illinois right now, based on growth. Yes, chief?
Um, I, you know, I would ask that we have a meeting to discuss these things with the department heads, this is a sent, this, this, for purchase, these P O's only. Um, to discuss all the things that associate, I know that we've, we've met here a little bit, here and there about it. But, but you know, I, I will say that, you know, this has been brought up in the past before. Um, I, I can't buy a pair of fire boots for under five hundred dollars. When the minute somebody's fire boots get a leak in them, uh, then I have to order them, I can't, I can't have their boots filling up with water and then getting steam burned, so the question becomes.
But that would codify as an emergency purchase.
The question becomes is, yes, that is more important than we lay out what's an emergency purchase and at what point, and define that, which hasn't been really defined.
Well, because emerg, because emergency purchases are essentially, I mean, again, it's defined in, in item L of, of, of the code. Um, it's what's deemed as an emergency, and again, just the checks and balances by going to the, to the department commissioner, that gives the department commissioner a say-so as well as the commissioner of accounts and finance, like, if you've got, and that, that is in hopes that you reach one of them.
Who defines an emergency? The, the department head who knows the operations? Or the uh, police and fire commissioner, who certainly is just a liaison between the operations and finance commissioner, who is the, who is a charge of finances? I would tend to think that the department head is the one who defines that.
I would not disagree with that, chief, uh, in, in the sense that as long as it's disclosed, hey, we are making this on an emergency purchase because firefighter, Melvin needs new boots.
Sure.
Like, one, one would think that, that, that's why we have the department heads that we have. The, just the, the disclosure that, hey, this is an emergency purchase just prepares for when it comes through. Uh, very much like the sludge pump that we approved earlier. We made it, it went down, we had no, or no sludge motor, was it motor or plant, whatever it was. Uh, it had to happen, because if we didn't get it done, there's no telling what the sewer system looks like with the waste water treatment that looks like. It was deemed as an emergency purchase, and then we still had the ability to come back and discuss it. Essentially, the council is going to deem as a whole, whether it was an emergency or not.
Do you believe that, 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 let's say that we took it to seven fifty, which would be my vote if I was sitting in your chair and knew what I knew from my position, I would move it to seven fifty. Um, that is probably gonna eliminate some of your problems. Um, because a lot of these petty things that are boots or whatever are no longer an issue. I believe that anything that you as the council, being fiscally responsible, certainly, if you're worried about P O, it's probably gonna be something that far exceeds seven fifty. I think that brings you some leniency on the bottom side, this causing some of these problems, and really clearly defines the bigger items need to be ran through. Um, you get to four hundred, we, I feel like we, based on what I knew in my department, we, we muddy up the waters a lot more than we fix them.
It's, a, a lot of this is simply, again, if, if there is something that, there is a, there is a conveyed need, not a want, a conveyed need. This council is not going to deny it if it's went through the proper.
Yes, it was very good about that, yes.
Like, I mean, we, I, I, I think we, we don't see eye to eye, but we, we agree that we're gonna make sure that our, that our, our departments have the tools that they have to have. There's just a process that we have to go through this in order, in order to make these purchases. Um, again, I don't know what's happened in the past. That's why I didn't make a motion to make this change, I wanted discussion, because I felt it warranted discussion. But if I increase and I'm still not, my, my thought process was if I increase the number and I'm still not getting paperwork, I've gotten nowhere. And again, we can go down the route where we just shut it off, and every single purchase has to be made with a purchase order and approved by, you know, we'll just do purchases every, we'll do it twice a month, like other, other larger municipalities. Now, I will, in full disclosure, the department heads have purchasing power up to a number amount, but guess what? They still fill out a P O. So if you need to go buy those boots, and we're not telling you, you can't buy those boots.
Sure.
You just gotta turn them in a P O.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you buy your boots for three ninety-nine ninety-nine, don't need to see a P O, if you buy them for four oh one oh one or four hundred and one, and, and a penny.
Yeah.
You need a P O, I'm not saying you can't buy them, just creating the paper trail, I mean, ultimately, it's more about creating conversation. I mean, honestly, the, the, the more, the bulk of this work is created in the clerk's office and accounts receivable, because the clerk has to scan all these P O's in.
Yeah, and that's gonna get worse, not better.
But that's, but that's what I mean, like, it, it continues to be the same thing over and over again.
Right.
And I, I have no issue raising the threshold, but there's still gotta be a P O, and, and that should be common sense, I don't see, I, I, I have.
Your greater concern is not the amount, it's, it's getting the paperwork.
Yeah, and, and ultimately, the, the, the number is, is the message sent, like, I'm, I'm tired of, of, of saying the same thing over and over again about getting P O's turned in, and we can get past one or two here and there, because things slip through the cracks. But it's when it's habitual, or when it's, when it's all departments, it makes it very frustrating, because i- if I, i- i- if I'm, if I'm upset with one department because they don't get their crap turned in on time, and then the other department doesn't do it.
Yeah.
Are they gonna get the same punishment for the same crime? That's.
So, so do we have to wait two weeks after the purchase order is approved before we can order the item that we need?
The vast majority, to my understanding, is when these P O, this stuff's already ordered, when we see the P O, we're approving the purchase as its, as its own.
That was just what I did with the, the server.
A capital expenditure that was in the new fiscal year budget that was purchased in the prior year budget. We, we were going to approve the purchase if it came out of impound. I've been accused of gutting the impound fund, which is a slush fund, for any additional stuff outside the budget parameters. It's going to get charged back to the current, to, to the previous fiscal year. There's so little discussion when it comes to monster expenditures. I mean, fifty-five hundred dollars is a lot of money. We could have had the ability to shop it around.
I went with Concept, which the city's used for years.
But that's, I mean, we're not buying a laptop from Walmart or Chromebook, we're not buying a monitor.
No, it's a server.
It's, it's.
That I need for my office.
It's a fifty-five hundred dollar server. Concept's going to install it regardless of who we buy it from, because we purchase a block of hours from them annually.
Absolutely.
You know, and also, I'm not going to deny, you know, I don't think it's fair to Eric Christie and Concept to make a purchase from him, and, and whoever makes the purchase puts the city's name on it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna treat Eric improperly, he's never gonna be able to unload this server. I, i- it, it's not fair to him, but there's a process of the way we do things. So do we just bypass and, and do we go back and do we revisit that purchase order and approve it? And then say, oh, well, going forward, we're going to fix it? Someone explain this to me.
Yeah, we have o- other issues, that's why I believe that we need to have a in-depth conversation, uh, you know. Some that, like, for instance, I'll use an example, we have, we have many different accounts that have been tied up and linked with an address to City Hall. And then some of them that are addressed to the department. So I, multiple times I have, um, looked on my, uh, as, as, uh, treasurer, uh, Mino has, has provided me. Looked on stuff that I have never received a bill for. That was, it was sent to City Hall, not to the fire department, therefore it was never received, I couldn't make a PO. I couldn't tell you if PO was ever made, and if there was one made, I had no, uh, my signature wasn't on it, I was not. Matter of fact, most of it didn't even have a, um, uh, identifier on it for what line item. So if we're gonna go to this route, then we really need to work towards making sure either A, every bill goes to City Hall, or every bill goes to the department. But we can't have them split between the two, that's caused a lot of problems I've been experiencing in the end of that.
I don't disagree with that at all either, because it, it eliminates a lot of confusion in both sides. Well, not only the department head, uh, the, because, I mean, I'm pretty sure there's, I'm pretty sure there's a PO box for the water barn, is there not? There's not?
Yeah, the.
We have one PO box.
One PO box.
The, the second part is, a lot of times, I, you know, I, I like to make sure that people are providing the service to me that I am expecting. And in the past, I've held on to, to things to make sure that the service or the product was as they, uh, described. Um, that sometimes, depending on what the repair was, could be three weeks late, could be three months late. The, the three month late wasn't because it was sitting on my desk and I didn't, I didn't look down and ever see it. It was because I was waiting on them to uphold their end of the bargain, which me as a department head, I figured that is one of the responsibilities that I have.
But, but a good thing about having a PO, even if it, even if it's three months, but PO's here, it's been approved, he can anticipate it's coming.
If you have the innate ability to understand what the cost is going to be, which a lot of times in our business, we don't.
On, on top of it, a lot of that stuff, if, if somebody doesn't fulfill their end of the bargain.
Yeah.
I have corporate counsel, like, I, I, I have a bulldog that we can send after, hey, you, we cut you a check and we didn't receive the work that was provided to us.
Right.
We, we.
Yeah, well, when the money's in their hands, good luck, that's what I've always learned.
But, I mean, we're not, most of the people that we're dealing with, again, the vast majority are people that are reputable and are not going to, gonna put the screws to us either. I mean, i- if you're dealing with, uh.
Yeah, vehicle.
You're dealing with galls or, or, or Schneel or anybody, they're not going to do that.
Right.
I mean, most of them aren't providing you anything until you pay for it anyway, so I mean, it's kind of the same foot on, it's kind of the same shoe on them.
It's been large scale vehicle repairs is when major, been mostly the issue where we take something in, they say, hey, I think that we're probably, I'll have to get it tore down. Here's essentially what, I need a quote, well, here's your quote, well, it's a five thousand dollar quote, well, by the time they fix it, we're at nine thousand dollars because, well, I got in there and I found this and this. It would be a very big bear for me to have to keep, continue upgrading a PO. I consider that emergency work, I, I, I get that, once they provide me with a bill, then I turn the purchase order in for that repair. And then I do my best, but even, I've had multiple times where they've sent my product back and then it not, it didn't live up to what they, and I call them and say, hey, guys. This is not, either still doing, has the same problem, or something's not right, um, and I need you to fix it. So I, me, I, the, the, the power I have is to hold their money or hold that PO until they get that product back to me. And then I say, okay, that's fair enough, I know how this is supposed to operate, now it operates the way you said it was going to after repair, now I turn it in. But that could mean that, that it could be a month or two months late. And it just, it's just the nature of the beast.
Yeah.
It's the nature of the beast.
Just mark on.
It just needs to be filed.
I mean, you've got that.
Well, well, and again.
They, that's. Right, what do you guys want to do with the amount? I mean, if you, again, that's why it's discussed.
What are you wanting to do, are you wanting the four hundred?
Honestly, the four hundred was.
You tell us what you want.
Seven fifty is appropriate if it gets done. That, that's ultimately what I want, is I want the paper trail established.
Okay.
If we're gonna do it at seven fifty, that's fine. And then, the nice thing is, is the council as a whole now has a say in this policy if it's codified.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
If it, if we put it at seven fifty and it doesn't work, take it to two hundred.
Well, how much, you just write up your folks, I mean, that's what's, I mean, you write them up, I mean, they're disciplined.
And that was what I was gonna say, rather than raising and lowering it, they're used to five hundred, keep it at five, add the discipline.
Guys, I mean, we, we spoke in full circle. And, and, and it's codified, so now it no longer gets to be unilaterally changed by the commissioner of accounts and finance, whoever it is.
Guys are talking about the, the amount here, the reality is this, his, his beef i- is, is, he, he puts four hundred to, to get everybody talking. The reality is, is he's saying, hey, do the POs, fill them out. So, so if they're not filled out, then you know what, then, then there's some form of discipline on these employees that don't fill them out. Don't come to us three months later, don't come to the council three months later and expect it to be paid. Regardless of the excuse, if, if, if you, if, if the chiefs have to have something that's, takes three months to say, oh, now I believe it works properly, cause I've got all this vast experience. Come three months early, the council will say, I got this bill, I got this bill, I don't know if we're gonna pay it or not, but I want you to know about it.
Yeah.
Here's the PO, that's what you want.
It's just not all black and white, Tom or anyone else.
It's not black and white.
There's gray.
It's to tell them what you, you're gonna spend money on, whether it's three days, three minutes, or three years, you're, they just wanna know.
So what you're saying is Shane's got an engine, and we could've had the same thing with eight oh three right now.
Don't know, yeah.
It's in the shop, so if Shane gets the thing back, the purchase order sends it, you're gonna pay it if the truck's not right? Or you're gonna hold on to.
But, but the council wants to know that there's a, they're just saying, fill out the PO for the work.
It's just, it's just a way to know how to manage money.
Do you want me to turn one in without a cost on it? Because I can say, yes, you're going to have this cost, but I can't give you a cost, I can't tell you if it's three thousand or forty thousand.
If they give you an initial quote, you attach the quote to it, and if there's nothing.
They will not.
If there's nothing, but at some point, they're gonna send you a bill.
Yes, that's what I'm gonna get, a bill.
Or before you pick up your truck, because they're gonna want their money because they're not dealing with four or five hundred bucks.
Typically at the same time.
They're dealing with twenty thousand dollars at a, a WAP.
Right.
And this wouldn't be, that, that's not a surprise, we all know, there's things we don't know about.
Yeah, especially with eight oh three.
Yes, if you're listening tonight, guys, here's the issue, I think, I think you've got a fire chief that's telling you, he doesn't care if it's ten thousand dollars, he's not gonna fill it out.
That's not correct.
No, I, I, I mean, you're not gonna fill it out in, until you feel like it works properly.
Well, I think that, I think that the minute I hand it over and it becomes part of the pay, the payment plan, where you guys cut the check. The, if I call them back next week and they've already received their ten thousand dollar check.
They're not gonna get it.
They are not fixing my problem.
And everybody here, Chris, I think you have said this over and over, you're not paying the bill, you just wanna know that there's gonna be a bill coming. Am I missing something?
That way, there's no surprise when the treasurer sees it. And, and again, this is, this is a blanket wide policy, but this is very important, especially to the water and sewer revenue fund right now. Which, there are months that we are happy that we have a light bill load because they can't pay their bills through cash flow. But at least we know that it's coming.
If, if they know an estimate, they don't know what it is, you just want the paperwork.
Yeah, and again, the, the, the amount, the amount is one hundred percent negot, I mean, it's all negotiable, I have one vote. And if we wanna keep the, if we wanna keep the number the same, hell, I don't care to raise the amount, I just wanna see, we just need to see paperwork. That, that's all, that's what this is about, this is all about paperwork, so I have no problem raising the threshold to seven fifty. If everybody sitting at this table who has a vote agrees that that's an appropriate number, I have no problem doing that. That's no problem at all, we're just caught, we're codifying the number now, wh- whomever the finance commissioner is in the future, me, Kathy, Tom. Whoever it is, has the, does, no longer has the ability to just say, nope.
Sure. Done, yeah.
Purchase, purchase policy's codified now, the amount is codified, so now it has to go back to the entire council to be amended.
To change.
To, to change, so, you know, I could say, guys, we gotta ratchet it down to a penny because I'm tired of it, and I can get right out of here, so make everybody happy.
Raise the amount.
But you guys, I mean, I'm fine with seven fifty, as long as we get the paperwork still.
They get the paperwork, they get a higher number.
That, I mean, does that, does that fit?
But we're gonna, I, gonna stay on top of the, the purchase.
I absolutely agree on, I absolutely agree, and again, you're right, inflation set everything up.
I don't say it's rewarding bad behavior, but we've not stayed at five hundred, so now we're gonna increase it to seven fifty, but with better accountability.
Better.
And, and that's fine.
With the better accountability, things as long as we're following through.
And that's on us, that's a fantastic compromise.
You've got to decide your own this one or off, but that, but you, you've got to do your own.
It'd be, and I teach that it'd be on us.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's, it, it not only doesn't hold the employees accountable, it also puts some pressure on the commissioners to hold their departments accountable as well. So I, I make a motion to amend the purchase, the bidding and contract procedures to add a purchase order policy. With an amendment of striking through four hundred dollars and making it seven fifty.
And that'll become paragraph N under one, two, thirty-four.
Yes, and then the addition on paragraph L of emergency purchases.
Great.
I'll second that.
Wish your hands.
Yes.
Wish your body.
Yes.
Wish your story. There are messages.
Yes. Item E, we're gonna make one amendment to the budget, this was, this was of none of our doing, this, but this keeps us in big races with the auditors. Uh, for the next fiscal year, we were kind of hoping that we could get eight oh six bought and paid for before the end of the last fiscal year. Unfortunately, we couldn't get that pulled off, um, so we need, that's enough of a, of a change of what we paid for the truck, the two hundred grand, we need to amend the budget. I'm not going to amend the budget for every single small thing we do, but I don't envision a lot of surprise two hundred thousand dollar purchases either. So I make a motion that we amend the budget to include a Ford F five fifty mini pumper. It will come out of account seventy-three, which is the municipal utility tax. The last four digits of the code are five oh three four, you can write it in, Lisa might give you that page as well, but I would have to make a motion to amend the budget. And municipal utility tax gas electric fund, two hundred thousand dollars and this current expenditure of the Ford F five fifty mini pumper.
Second.
Wish your hands.
Yes.
Wish your body.
Yes.
Wish your story. There are messages.
Yes. Here I am kicking for an S. F, there was never an intent to have action, this is planting the seed in discussion. And I kind of already have built in what my compromise is. Apparently, there's always a discussion about time clocks, we have six different buildings, we have a lot of moving pieces. For the police, it's pretty easy to identify when they come on duty because they call in through radio, hey.
Yeah.
So those are easy to verify, uh, the, the fire department shifts are staple eight to eight, eight AM to following eight AM. Uh, and, and this has not been taken on public works at all, so like, I can't stress that enough, I'm not trying to take on public works. Craig has three buildings he has to handle and there's some moving pieces there. I'm more interested in a time software because I don't, I mean, I know Kathy, you've seen them, our time sheets are still by paper. So everything is calculated through paper, by hand, and it's, it's the current system and not faulting it, but I would like to move forward. If, if, if our time management, if, if we do something with time management software and it requires a time clock, so be it. It's not, I'm not hell bent on, we have to have time clocks for all departments and we're, we've got to get a better way of being more efficient on this. Whether it's additional software, electronic reporting, because then, neither of you guys have to worry about hauling up here on a Monday to get payroll turned in. Because you can do it electronically from, you know, you don't have to wait for, you know, if you've had a guy that's gone, been, he's gone off the end of payroll and he had three days before he took off. You don't have to wait for him to come back in to fill his time sheet out, like, it's filled out electronically, he verifies it, we get it in. I don't know if that comes through a time clock or a payroll management software, to, to be completely honest. I've not researched any apps or software, this is essentially planting the seed. I know that it's a taboo subject, um, but there's got to be a middle ground to where it's easier to verify these things without requiring my department heads to, to be looking over the shoulders of their employees.
Have you had some complaints, I mean, uh, time clock, it, are, do you have some complaints on people showing up, not showing up? Or getting paid to do this?
We, we, we typically have the, oh, I forgot to write down that I took this time off. And it's not a single employee, I'm, again, it's not a single employer from a single department. It, it's, I forgot to write this time down, or I took PTO here and I forgot to write it down, it's, it's very much across the board. Again, like, like I said, some are easier to, to, for lack of a better word, police than others. And we're not trying to, I don't wanna play gotcha, I'm not trying to be that cop that gets you for a thirty-one and a thirty. But there's got to be a better way, rather than, oh, I forgot to put this down, like, again, it's probably still gonna happen and with time clocks, you're still gonna have errors. Guys on lunch have a water break, they forget to go back, buy a shot, clock in, and they go into a call. To work, you know, any, any of those, there is a wider discussion here, so this is essentially planting the seed that we've got, we've got to do something a little bit different. Not, not turn them on its head, not reinventing the wheel. We need a wider discussion, again, if it's software, I know, I, I don't, do you, does you guys? Yes.
That keeps track of all of ours.
Right.
And does it coincide, so does it, does, is it an automatic report from when they go on through dispatch, or do you enter it manually?
So with a lab tech, it does keep track of their time. Uh, currently, when you log into lab tech, there's a schedule, it'll have everybody on the schedule. Whenever they request time off through the program, it will alert Chief and I that they're requesting time off or overtime. We approve it or deny it, whichever one, and then it keeps track of that and logs it. So then when Lisa needs payroll, I can go in and I do it by individual people, cause it's by employee. And it will generate, uh, how many, how many hours they worked, how many overtime hours they worked. However, because she's used to her typical, you know, sheet, I translate that into the sheet that she prefers, but, um.
So you take the digital and turn it into a hard copy?
Kind of, yeah, so currently with our new treasurer, with our new treasurer, I could just simply print those off. And if he was okay with that, he could translate it into whatever he wants, it's already there, it's printed, it's just in a different format.
Well, and, 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 you know, and, and some, and defensively, like.
Yeah.
The other, the other, I mean, I'm gonna.
I mean, everybody's used to their own way, so.
The other five departments are turning in a hard copy old school Excel spreadsheet, whereas you guys have the new management software.
Correct.
So going, so for, for her work, going backwards is the appropriate move currently, because the other departments are using an, an, an older form of, of doing it.
If they have some software like that, they.
Yeah.
I, I will say, whenever, um, we were checking into the lab tech, um, it is very public safety friendly, like, they have fire departments that are on it. Like, you could add in all city employees on it. Um, just a thought.
And, and that's kind of, and that's kind of what I'm, what I'm gearing towards.
Yeah.
It's, you know, ultimately, we look at our department heads to police their employees. Again, some would be harder than others if Shane's got three stations to deal with.
It's very difficult, it, it is, the fire department is the hardest to do this to. Um, simply because we're not a fire department that, like, the police department have to schedule people, so it's not in the sense that there's the emergency and people come running from their home to back up on duty. It's essentially if somebody's off, there's somebody, that's how they get their overtime. Us, it's, it could be ten seconds from now. Um, you know, for instance, for instance, like me, I, I typically turn in, uh, comp time for calls that I go to. But, but other than that, you know, for, um, I was there two hours the other night that won't go on my schedule. I go to Maryland with, you know, for, with no charge state for twenty-four plus hours that won't go on anything, that's essentially time that I'm giving the city, you know. Um, so I just make my things balance out, you know, because I know that I'm gonna be, like, I, if, if we ran, if we had an hour clock on my time from my career for twenty-four years. You guys have got the benefit out of me, you guys are far exceeding what I've, what I've received. Uh, because I've just put in so many hours, you know, different times, here, there and everywhere. So I may get a period of ti, a short period of time where, where I'm, I'm not there, but I make sure everything equals out. You know, I, I'm getting, I'm putting in far exceeding forty hours every, every week, you know, and if I'm not, I'm using comp time and it's on my sheet. You know, it's just very difficult for the firemen per se, because then they are in a situation where they come running back for a fire call or whatever. A time clock will only work for, under regularly scheduled hours, it will not work for anything beyond that.
And it's, and it's, a lot of it is the same with the public works guys, especially if there's a water leak, like, you have a guy come in who gets a dump truck and a backhoe. You may have two other laborers who just drive their vehicle to the brake sign and they never go to the bomb, so I, I, I get that aspect, and again, there's, but there's still, there is the remote ability. That the supervisor, be it the chief or the lead man, can still alter those, you know, because they're still verifying the, the payroll of their employees regardless.
Sure.
Uh, they can still alter those, there's just, I, I feel there's got to be a better, more consistent way.
I understand.
And, you know, again, like I said, I was not under the impression of taking any action in this, this was very much planting the seed that, that we need to kind of move in a different direction. And get everybody at the table for this one, because again, police is not the same as fire and public safety sure as hell is not the same as public works.
Right.
I will, I will say, it's not a physical time clock, it's an app on our phone.
Right.
Where, you know, if he, if he works, like, the events that chief works and he wants to turn in time for, that he doesn't get compensated for, he just lets me know, hey, I got five hours comp time for working the coast event. Or if the guys are working overtime, they just go onto this app and they submit their overtime that way, it's eliminated the paper trail.
It does keep track of my comp time as well.
Yeah, we can add in what type of time, like, you know, the department heads don't get overtime, neither do we, uh, you know, so we get comp time.
Right.
We can add in that type of time to be calculated and, and checked, so we, we have done that.
And, and, and that's, and that's one thing. And, and, and that's, and that's one thing that I know is a big thing, is, is the app on the phone over the, away from the physical. Now, we, now, you would, we would still have to give an option of the, of the physical, either a FOB or a time clock, or biometric, or biometric time clock as an option, because if I make it a requirement to use the app, gonna have to start compensating our employees for the use of their phone. Uh, so I'm trying to play that, that fine HR line where we've got two options here, be it the, the app or a physical. Again, there, it, it, it's, and, and being in Illinois, like, you have to be prepared for what's coming, because if California and New York have done it, it's coming to Illinois. So that's, that's kind of what we're dealing with with that, so again, it's very much that discussion of trying to get everybody on the same page, and if we've got a software that the police department uses to a fairly good, consistent extent, then it, it warrants wider discussion, if we can start wrapping in our other employees, and I've already, I've already got that software onboarded, I'm gonna have to probably pay them more licenses, but I don't have to onboard a completely new software or have three separate softwares running for the same, for the, for all my employees.
My guys are going to an emergency, I, A, I can't ask them to clock in while they're going down the road. I can't ask them to clock in when they get to the fire station where they're throwing their gun, because time matters.
Absolutely.
And so they don't, then they end up clocking in either after the event, which doesn't make any sense. I have, I have incident reports, my incident reports knows the time that that thing gets toned out, that's essentially the same thing, and, and that's how they go off incident reports, and that's how I check their time cards every, every two weeks to make sure that they're spot on with their time.
Right.
So I, I have that system already in place.
I think really the conversation is, to kind of move it forward, kind of move on the agenda, is, this is like, there's like, there's probably a twenty percent of the time where there's that.
Yeah.
Where there's a water leak, where there's somebody that calls in more officers or whatever, you're looking at the eighty percent.
Yes.
You're looking at the regular run of the, and I've wrestled with this since I became a commissioner, that we're handing in a physical handwritten chicken scratch time sheet for eighty percent of the departments. I didn't know you guys were getting them digitally and transferring them to.
I'm just trying to keep everybody happy.
But that's the, that, and in that situation, it makes sense to go backwards, because everybody else is, is on your horse.
I've been here for fourteen years, that's how we've done it.
But I think, I think that there's, I think there's a strategy to look at, how do we help move us forward at least to the twentieth, not the twenty-first century, the twentieth century and start digitizing some of this stuff, and that way, in form of the run of the mill, but there's gonna be situations that every department's gonna be outside of that. And, and those are unique. And, and it's, again, it's the same, you may have a guy, he comes in, he comes in at seven thirty just to drink coffee before his shift starts, and he gets toned out at seven forty-five and forgets to clock in. Like, we can go fix that, like, that's, that, those are easy things, because we, we have those department heads, we, we, we put the trust, and I'm not saying that we don't trust our employees. It, it's, it's, it's a lot of accountability, there's protection on both sides for it. You know, like I said, it, it's spurring the discussion, and it, I'm, I'm happy to know that the software that the police department has can onboard additional employees throughout departments that aren't just in the police department.
We, we need a tutorial today. We have to go, we have to go to the police department to see it though.
No action, no action, no action, just discussion, just discussion, and we, again, we've had the discussion that I thought, that I kind of wanted to have. Again, it, the council has a hole, like, we have, there's so many things that we have to discuss at this table, because we all can't talk about it outside of here, we can't, because we have, we don't want OMA violations. So, sorry for taking everybody's time, I, I never intended for any, any action on this, it was very much the spurning of discussion in order to, you know, in, in order to move forward with some remedies on this, and.
I think it's a good thing to move forward with something like this.
Yeah, and, and we don't.
It's so easy, you know, to procrastinate filling in your time and at the end of the week or.
You're guessing.
Yeah, you're guessing at it, and you may be shorting yourself, or you may be, you know.
And that, that happens, that, that, I will all admit, that happens.
For as, for as many that go over and write down a time that they didn't work, the opposite does indeed happen, where an employee will short themselves as well, like, I, I don't disagree with that at all either, like, again, there is a very, like, there's two extremes to this.
Right.
Do nothing, or just lock it all down, there is a wide ninety percent gap in the middle, where it kind of fixes all the problems, and without really turning anything on upside down. Again, a little bit of a learning curve if there's some software that's onboarded, but it's a software deal, it's not, hey, guys, you gotta change the way you do absolutely everything, it just makes things cleaner.
Yeah, then it comes down to trust, there's a psychological effect to this, I will say, because I've, I saw it, I saw it, we've, in, in the past with bad councils or a bad commissioner that we've had, you know, that was obviously a very public event. There's times when, once the, the board has a take that appears to go against the employees and there becomes a distrust, then those employees' productivity goes to zero, they do the bare minimum, and that's all, because they know that the minute they do anything more, it's for naught. Um, so when we can get our people to do a hundred, a hundred and twenty percent, uh, which our, our guys do, they'll go to Night to Shine and do manual help to Special O, Olympics, they'll do a lot of things that I refuse to pay them, they get very upset with me, um, over the deal, but I said, guys, we just simply can't afford it. But it's great for the community, it's great for the city, and it is moving us forward as, as a whole, as a community. So then when they see things going the other direction, where people don't trust them or think that they're being taken adva, that they're being taken advantage of and start putting things into place, to say that, it's very, very, uh, discouraging to them. You know, because they, they know they give so much time, they're complaining to me all the time about what they should get paid and that I don't pay them for, it becomes very difficult. So I don't want to kill their mojo, their motive and their, their ability to go above and beyond.
Well, if you could take this conversation back to them, and on behalf of the council, speak and say, well, Chris has said, here's why, here's what, here's how, but it's just a conversation, it's not a motivation killer, it's just to try to streamline and clean things up.
Yes, yeah.
And between to the modern times.
Yeah, we're behind the times, for sure.
All right, uh, anything under city attorney?
Mayor, I just have a couple of matters under you this evening, that's it.
All right, well, then under public affairs, and I'll do my best to be brief. Um, one thing I just received in the mail, which I think is interesting, just for the council to note, Ambran has a streetlight replacement program. They select cities in the service territory, and they replace streetlights to convert them over to LED at no cost to the city. Chris, no cost to the city. There you go, this week they're gonna start the conversta, uh, the conversion in Benton, they're gonna replace over a hundred streetlights identified to switch over, and so I'm gonna reach out to them and see if they can tell us which ones, but I thought the council would want to know that.
They have a lot of them out.
Yes, well, this, this is about switching over to LEDs, and my hope is they're choosing the ones that are out. Um, Water Festival went fantastic, I thought it came and went, um, I've already started conversations with Lenny about what it looks like next year. Two years from now, chances of West Main being under construction's been pretty high, we're gonna have to fight alternate parade routes, so I'm already talking, I'm gonna talk to her and say, what do we need to do? Based on West Frankfurt, they're still using alternate parade route because of their Main Street project. Uh, Master Bike Plan, just an update, is coming to a close, we actually have a main, a finalized plan, and Bert's gonna have that printed out for us. Uh, the number one priority is connecting the grade school, middle school, to the library, to the civic center and to the Benton Community Park, and we're kind of a great idea, and we were looking for names, we were gonna call it the Stephen Commons Bike Path, and kind of recognize and acknowledge him, and of course, I told Severn, he did a little twiddle all the way up the stairs. Um, he's excited about that, as well as the family, and so as that comes about, I'll let the council know more about that. And IDOT even approved on, like verbally in an, in an email, they approved and put a crosswalk in front of the library across South Main Street. For anybody that doesn't know, that knows IDOT, knows they do not like to do crosswalks, but they're on board with that one, so I thought that was great. Uh, I did have a meeting with the new director at the Renly Conservancy District, had lunch with him today, very productive meeting, very good conversation. How do we do economic development within corporate limits of the city, but Benton, which is out near Pheasant Hollow, Lake Zone and Sure Stay? And how do we look at developing that area, they want to do some on their side, so it was great to have those conversations. And, uh, that's kind of it, under public affairs, updates, do you have a couple of purchase orders? Uh, the first one's Agent Color Printer for two fifty seventy, approval to, first and second motion, prove that please.
Mr. Gates. Caroline?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes, and then the other purchase order there is that we had done a trial, a free run of this monday.com, which is a project management software. And we actually got Craig Miles onboard, who's excited about it, which I didn't think we could do that. Uh, but it's a great piece of software that's gonna allow us to track activities and events and projects that we have going on, if there's anything we could drop in there. Uh, so we're, Brooke's recommendation, which I agree with, is doing basically five sets, the seats they call them, one for public affairs, one public works, one finance, one police and one fire. But like, like building the building would be a great example, you drop that in, you can put things under it, you can input things that other people can view it, but then it kind of gives, it gives some communication, again, it's a transparency conversation. Uh, even if we're talking about the property on Commercial Street, that we've lagged in, the trees are down now, by the way, if you've noticed. Is that, when's that gonna get cleaned up, we'll put that in there, Beezer can go and look at it, they can project manage those things out. So it's our attempt about making sure we're all on the same page, we all know what's going on, and this is coming out of our strategic plan. And you can see there, uh, the total is one thousand one hundred and forty, we just need a first, second approval for that, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Caroline?
Yes.
And Mr. Story?
Yes.
Yes, and then I'm C and D was Mr. Calcaterra, and I have our city attorney who's gonna speak to those, he's more knowledgeable than I am on this.
Focus on C, it's discussion and approval, the percentage for the tip reimbursement for the state project. They're gonna do redevelopment with the city, as you know, they've finally completed there in addition, they pulled down all the old houses, made it just a beautiful area there. Um, just off the square on North Main. Um, they are bringing in eighteen to twenty new full-time jobs. And Brian and I have discussed this and looked at other projects in the past, and we believe that an eighty percent percentage would be appropriate, this is a large, large pro, uh, project. Um, and eighty percent reimbursement would be the recommendation of both he and I, and so we would ask for a motion and a second to approve eighty percent of their applicable costs be reimbursed with a line for the tip.
Which is how long?
Uh, the downtown tip, I believe, has about seven more years, if I'm not mistaken. Six or seven more years, now there may be an extension, obviously.
But they, so if we do extend the tip, would they still?
They would continue, yes.
Okay.
And as long as they're called, they have applicable costs and have not been reimbursed.
Okay.
A second. Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Revaya?
Yes.
Mr. Story? Mayor Masterson?
Yes.
And on the, uh, this was a surplus law that the city had an opportunity to potentially sell, but Brian didn't hit it to me this evening that that, he was not able to get, uh, the information to get that wrapped up, so that's a matter, though, you know, I don't, I haven't paid it, there's no, there's no action online.
It'll just, we'll have to come back in the future.
That's all I had there.
Great, thank you. Um, any miscellaneous business from the council? Any old business from the council? Any new business from the council, moving on here?
Just a quick update, eight oh six is here.
Yeah.
It's made, it's made, it's made more trips, it's, it's had more calls since it's been in our service for about three days than it did with the previous department.
Yeah.
Yeah, my miles on it coming here, but it definitely was there.
Yes, pretty much.
Just in commuter miles.
It's here, I think it's getting striped this week.
Wednesday, Wednesday, yep, radio's installed today, uh, lettering, uh, Wednesday. And the exhaust tip for the exhaust, uh, removal system tomorrow, so it's in service, so it'll be, uh, coming to an emergency near you.
Yeah, that's a little, but yes, yes, very good, uh, all right, any matters from the public?
I, if I can speak real quick for you, Tom, I, I, I do wanna, um, as you guys most know, we, uh, firefighter Jeff, I'm sorry, Captain Jeff Coleman retired, um, as of yesterday. Uh, twenty-six and a half years with the Benton Fire Department, started in October of nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, he's been an asset to the fire department, he's been an asset to the community as a whole. Um, you know, moved here, brought his family here, and they've all been, uh, very productive and, and, uh, helped our community and, and was a great hire for the city, so uh, certainly, he's taken over, he's into park ranger at the Corps, so, uh, anybody that camps. Yeah, anybody that camps will be seeing more of him, but, um, he's, uh, he, he's, uh, he's very, very thankful for, uh, the city and their service, um, and what they provided him in his twenty-six and a half years, and uh, it's nice to see somebody retire, which was such a great outlook and, and thankful for what they, what they receive from the city, so.
And it was interesting, yesterday morning, there was a call across from me, like, at a house across from me, and Craddock was there and he came across the street to talk to me right about the time signing off for the last time, I'm like, I've never heard that.
Yeah.
It was part of it, he's like, yeah, he's Coleman signing off right now for his last, I'm like, oh, man.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, there's, there's, there was a part, I'm like, that's kinda, that's kinda hard, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough transition, but he's got something safe focused on, so, uh, you know, just saying thank you on his behalf and, and, uh, you know, we'll, we will have a little bit of retirement party here sometime in the coming future, and, and you, you guys will be invited, um, so, um, just want to let you know that.
Good, thank you. Matters from the other public?
You want to hit the podium?
Please, that way folks in the camera can see you. They know who they're listening to.
Okay, first, I was listening to conversation there over POs. The five hundred dollar limit, I know that's been in effect for over fifteen years, it's way too low, so the seven fifty was a good boost. As far as the POs herself, on things you do not know, I used to do that all the time, I just put down estimated only. It solved it, because they couldn't send it through until they got the exact bill. So I simplified it. The fence, are we gonna have any fencing up at Moffitt Beach Park? I noticed we've got transient sleeping in there again.
No, no, so the retaining wall goes away, and the, and the, the gazebo comes down, and part of that, actually, Funkhauer's and I actually looked at that, how do we make that more open? So visually, the police can drive by and have visual visibility to minimize that exactly.
So it's gonna take the walls out, basically?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes. It'll be more open and more transparent, so you can see there a little easier, it makes it easier for the garden people to get in, but ultimately, an officer can patrol by.
Is there any way of locking down the, uh, water faucet?
Yeah, it could be locked down when the garden club is using it, that's just a procedure.
I know, there was one woman up there, the nude char at one time.
Yeah, probably.
Other thing is, uh, I always liked the harp about the new water meters, since I would spend a million dollars for them, and they were billed as being accurate, more accurate. But I had the fortunate, uh, ability to get a copy of the Franklin County Courthouse's water bill for one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and thirty-seven cents. So I would say that the new meters can't be accurate all the time. And while showing this, I'd run into a woman who actually had a twenty-five thousand dollar water bill, and said, well, they, they decided that, uh, they needed to reduce it, it was wrong. But for all the public out there, anybody who wants a copy of this, let me know, and I'll give you a copy of it, because computers are not accurate all the time, so never let them tell you they are, because they're not.
It was a software issue, it's happened in the past with our old system, it happens with this one. That's not an odd thing to go out, we recently had someone that's part of the chamber get a seventy-six thousand dollar water bill.
And teased me at the chamber meeting about it, by the way.
It's very hard, I'm trying to get rid of that one percent sales tax, and they're saying, well, we gotta pay these exorbitant bills.
Their, their bill is not a hundred thousand dollars.
I know, it should have been probably about one fifty or less.
I, I don't know exactly what it is, but the bill was corrected before that was brought to us at City Hall.
Yeah, well, the treasurer opened the bill up whenever I was standing there, and he said, oh my gosh, so I called. Thank you.
All right, we made the motion, we're in executive session. Sixty, fourteen, sixty.
Mr. Gates? Mr. Revaya?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes. Steve, I don't know if there's anything for me or. Do you need me to play executive session? I don't know, that came from the boys issue, they were saying, maybe issue weird.
Right now, it's just too much.
Was there anything for executive session?
They just mentioned a pop.
No, I, okay, I know when we were talking about one of the subjects, it was mentioned, we'll talk about executive session, I couldn't remember what it was.
Temporary appointment.
Oh!
I know, yeah, I mean, ever since I've took over as chief.
Yeah, because that's something.
Ten fifteen, guys.
I can say if you want to answer questions, certainly for a short, whatever, you know, maybe ask a question. He was on the pay, I was, he was on the pay structure, on the temp employee, which.
And I track checks for you.
Okay.
There was more water was, they just had.
I mean, but I can do those for you.
Downstairs.
Yeah, yeah, because we, we're, we're having an action on the, the.
So we extended that out with.
So do you wanna wait till we get out, or do you wanna go ahead and ask if they need you?
Yeah, let me ask them each.
And that worked for a while.
And also.
Yeah, so, I mean, once that happens, and, you know, extending that worked for a little while. It's just, if you look at the grab, you see where it, it comes up, goes up, goes down. If you look at the grab, you see where it, it comes up, goes up, goes down.
I think I would.
Oh.
Hey, I, I used to be. Give me, do you do a pump or something? Think we missed four thousand more if you can. Say what? Here's four thousand dollars and put on the estimate own. Then they get the paper.
They thought you'd take it out.
Uh, yeah, I know, well. They don't know what's wrong till they get in there.
Exactly.
Anyway.
All right, buddy. I'll see you later.
Everything else going smooth?
No.
He's honest, I mean.
Well, I apologize, okay.
It's my fault, it's our. Comes with the job, Tommy, comes with the job.
Comes with the job.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Good to see you later.
Wait, no one coming on, you take this session? Yeah. Yeah. No, I said, I had, no, I said, I have, had hung up a paper that was out in the garage to take with me. Okay. Bye.
I'll, 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 just call him.
Okay.
Commissioner Case?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervais? Yes. Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mayor Masters.
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All the favor?
Chief.
That's it.
I'm trying to get them pretty good out here. Corbin drives through today, he thought I should've said something.